May I invite members to join me in our opening prayer. Former mighty God, the source of most men standing, guide the minds of those of us who are about to take counsel together on matters concerning this county, that in our debate and in our decisions, we may faithfully discharge our duties of office and promote the health, safety and wellbeing of those we seek to serve through Jesus Christ our Lord. Welcome everybody to the 231st meeting of the council. We're fellow council officers, members of the public in attendance for listening to the meeting via Zoom. Welcome to this evening's special council meeting at the Rotherham County showroom. Before we start, I've just got one or two things I'd like to say and then Mark Andrews has got a few more. Firstly, could I welcome councillor Paul Brown to the council? Nice to see you. Nice back to the baptism of five. It's an easy reading to do, it's casual. Could I ask everyone here, members and public, to respect what is said tonight? Everyone here has Rutland at heart and we all want to do the best for our county. So please do not make comments etc. When members and officers are speaking, I want us all to walk from here tonight knowing that whatever the result, it was done in a dignified way and that we can pull together to get the best result for Rutland. I have been requested by some members about having bad backs and things. So if members during the meeting are finding it difficult to sit or quite happy to have a stand, as long as they don't leave the room, it won't affect your vote. But if you do leave the room, then it will. I'll hand over to Mark now.
Thank you, chairman. For listeners, this is Mark Andrews, Deputy Director for the Rotherham County Council. Before I make a request to help us with your arrangements, I think it's just important, as a number of people have commented on our temporary arrangements, that we just reflect on why we have them. Last year, we dedicated part of our building to the council chamber to the Rutland vaccination programme. This programme is coming to an end this month. It's enabled us to vaccinate 90% of the population of Rutland. However, like everything managing the pandemic, this is meant that we have to compromise. And I'm not going to pretend that tonight isn't in some way, in terms of the arrangements, a compromise. And what I hope is that members and the community will accept that compromise, given the impact that giving up our council chamber has had on managing the welfare of our community. So what I ask of people tonight is to help us with the arrangements. The councillors firstly could identify themselves with their name and what they represent each time they speak. Speak up and speak clearly so our virtual audience has the best opportunity to follow meeting. And I would also ask those with deputations and questions to do the same.
Item one on the agenda is the apologies. Are there any apologies? Chairman's announcements, I would like to refer to the previously circulated announcements, which were regarding a single engagement. Item three announcements from me, the members of the cabinet and the head of state service. I've been advised that there are no announcements to be made this evening. Declarations of interest. In accordance with the regulations, members are allowed to declare any disposable interests under the code of conduct and the nature of those interests in respect to items on this agenda or and/or in the state if section 106 of the local government finance act 1992 applies to them. Do we have any declarations of interest this evening? No, thank you. Item five. I want to include all the deputations and questions tonight. Standing orders were only allowed half an hour. So for this item only, item five, I would like to suspend standing orders so that all the deputies and questions are heard tonight. So could I have a proposal please? Councillor Law, second councillor Stevenson, I'll get it right tonight. All those in favour? Thank you. We have several deputations and questions this evening and I would like members of the public to come to the prepared seat and present them in order they will receive. But first, I would like to ensure that all the petitions. Oh, we've done them, sorry. Yeah, firstly, we have a deputation from Sinclair Rogers of Keton Parish Council. Please can you make your way forward? You have five minutes to present the deputation.
Thank you, chairman. Keton Parish Council wishes to bring to your attention, ladies and gentlemen, what it considers to be one of the many unintended consequences of the county council's rejection of its portion of the housing infrastructure fund earliest this year. This reduction will have its impact on villages throughout the county that appears not to have been fully considered. At the meeting of the parish forum on the 23rd of August, it was suggested that following the withdrawal of the current local plan, there would be a planning free fall. A serious problem with this possible increase in the population of the village is that there is nothing like the addition to local resources that is needed to accommodate the increase. Although the county council has designated Keton as one of its service centres, the village already lacks essential services and has poor public transport. One cannot, for example, go from Keton to open by bus. At the time of writing, there are four planned applications for housing development in Keton, which are likely to add some 20% to the population. The village is already struggling with problems of speeding and parking. Keton Parish Council remains deeply concerned about the possibility of yet more developments in the village and the lack of any accompanying infrastructure that will help all its new and established residents to benefit from living a happy and fulfilled life in Rutland. We hope the county council will pay full attention to the needs and aspirations of the many villages in Rutland that contribute so much to the essential and special nature of the county of Rutland.
Members, you have five minutes. Have you got any questions? No? Thank you very much. Next, we have a question from Mr David Vickery. Five minutes to speak and to ask your question.
Good evening, Mr Chairman, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Vickery and I live in Liddington. I have the support of my parish council in asking this question. I used to work as a senior planning inspector for the Planning Inspectorate, where my prime task was to examine local plans such as the one you are now preparing and to carry out local plan advisory visits to councils. My question here today is meant therefore to be helpful, proactive and positive. Mr Chairman, I'm not expecting a detailed reply to my question, merely an assurance that the council would use all the possibilities open to it to prevent unwanted and unsustainable development. I would have given you some more advice, but I've been told that I'm not allowed to understand the orders. But may I ask, now that you've suspended standing orders, am I allowed to add a few more paragraphs to what I've said? Mr Chairman?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll pick this up. The standing order that has been suspended is in relation to the timings open, not in relation to the content of the question. So please present your question as submitted, Mr Vickery. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as you all know, this is a very difficult situation for the council and its residents. There are no easy solutions.
Chairman, point of order. I thought the benching officer asked Mr Vickery to make his question and no other comments.
I am about to.
Can you keep to the script, any words left?
I am, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. My question, Mr Chairman, I formally put. If you'd given me five seconds more, I would have finished.
Do you want to read your questions out?
I don't know. I formally put it. I was told by Mr Delaney that I needn't read the question out. I could ask the council to just formally take it on board and I thought I'd not waste everyone's time. You've all got it right.
If I may ask, councillors, Mr Vickery is definitely entitled to put his question out. But as written in papers before, you all members, I believe, have a copy of that question and I hope you've had time to see that particular question, of course.
I'm just mindful of the fact that people are actually listening to this meeting and I think it would help if he did read his question so people knew exactly what we are talking about. Not everybody has the.
I'm very happy to, Mr Chairman. I was just told to save time, so I was trying to help you. But my question is, if the report's recommendations are approved to withdraw the submitted local plan, will the council in the interim, until a new local plan is prepared and adopted, take advantage of the recent Court of Appeal judgment, appeal investments, to enhance its prospects of resisting speculative and unplanned housing developments by, one, preparing a publicly accessible planning document regularly updated of those environmental protection and other policies in its existing adopted local plan, which it considers not to be out of date in terms of paragraph 11D of the MPBF, the National Planning Policy Framework? Preparing supplementary planning documents under the regulations by using the work already undertaken for the submitted local plan to update the settlement hierarchy planning policies which guide development locations in Rutland? That's policies CS3 and CS4 of the adopted core strategy. That's because an SPPD is a material consideration in decision making. Three, preparing a supplementary planning document by using the work already undertaken for the submitted local plan to update the planned limits of development set out in policy SP5 of the adopted site allocations and policies DVD. Four, where necessary, updating key conservation area appraisals in those towns and villages likely to be under development pressure to ensure that key open spaces, views and sensitive building groups are highlighted as areas to be kept free of development.
Thank you very much. Members, you have five minutes to ask your questions. Oh no, sorry. Can I invite councillor Rosell first?
Kevin, thank you. Mr Vickery? We are aware of the stated Court of Appeal judgment. This will be relevant in decision making irrespective of any further action the council could take to resist speculative and unplanned housing developments. Appeal case as well as Glabman Developments Limited versus Secretary of State for Housing, Communities and Local Government, brackets 2021 EWCA CIV 104, make it clear that the decision maker can take into account conflict with development policies in applying the tilted balance in favour of development under paragraph 11D, brackets I, of the National Planning Policy Framework. However, the weight to be given to those environmental policies is a matter of judgment for the decision maker in the circumstances of any proposal. On an appeal where relevant, the council would therefore refer to and rely upon the approach of the Court of Appeal in those cases in any event, but the tilted balance would still have to be applied. Reports of planning committee will still be expected to include advice on relevant planning policies to be taken into account by the decision maker. In direct response to question one, paragraph 11D and the accompanying footnote, make it clear that there is a presumption in favour of sustainable development where the policies, which are most important for determining the application, are out of date. The footnote accompanying this specifies that if this includes applications involving the provision of housing, situations where the local planning authority cannot demonstrate a five-year supply of deliverable housing sites, brackets with the appropriate buffer set out in paragraph 74, or where the housing delivery test indicates that the delivery of housing was substantially low, less than 75% of the housing requirement over the previous three years. Whilst the suggested document might be helpful for public awareness, the document itself would have little or no weight in planning decision making. It may assist in providing guidance to developers and decision makers, but there will still be the matter of judgment for the decision maker in the circumstances of any proposal. There is also a time and cost reducing such a document, which would need to be balanced against the need to focus on the preparation of a new local plan as soon as possible. A new local plan is still considered to be the most effective way for the council to achieve a five-year housing supply in a planned way. As set out in the report, council is recommended that approval is therefore given to the preparation of a new local plan. In response to questions two and three, again, these will take considerable time and staff resource to prepare which would need to be balanced against the imperative to prepare a new local plan. The recommendation to prepare a new local plan will offer the opportunity to look again at settlement hierarchy and other policies including the core strategy. Despite the submitted local plan evidence base, the process of preparing SPD is estimated to take around two years, allowing for its preparation, approval for consultation, consultation in line with the council's statement of community involvement, subsequent review to take account of comments made through the consultation and subsequent adoption by the council. There is also a significant risk to the approach suggested by Mr Vickery this question. As there is a danger that introducing a new policy through SPD may be subject to legal challenge, possible taking account of case law, William Davis Limited versus RS and Charmwood Borough Council 2017, EWHC 3006, brackets Abing, brackets 23 November 2017. In response to question four, again, we recognise the benefit of updating conservation area appraisals. The request for funding to mitigate the impact of operating without a plan includes the need to recruit a full-time conservation officer, which in part will support a review of conservation areas. This will also take time and will feed into the process of making a new local plan. Given the extent and number of conservation areas in Rutland that require reappraisal, so this is a long-term task for the council to address. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. You have the opportunity for a supplementary.
Chairman, am I allowed to wish you all the very best of British luck? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Vickery.
Chair, no questions. We have a deputation from Mr David.
It is a point of order, chairman. Sorry, I understood that we were to ask or have the opportunity to ask questions of the deputation. I just listened to a very long statement. I had a question myself.
Mr Chairman, point of order. I was asked a question. I provided an answer to that question. It was not a deputation?
It wasn't a deputation, I did it to question, so I'm casted, yes.
Thank you, chairman, for that clarity. Thank you.
Thanks. Obviously. We have a deputation from Mr David Hodgson.
Good evening, councillors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is David Hodgson and I am a resident of Greatham. The consequences of accepting the recommendation for you are clearly laid out in the report. It will cost 1.4 million pounds. This will have a significant impact on the services which Rutland can provide, outlined in clause two of the report. It will take a minimum of four years to create a new plan. See the table at the end of the report. The county will not have an up-to-date strategic policy framework to meet its identified housing and development needs, i.e. no five-year housing supply, clause 214. The NPBF requires that the default position on planning applications is that they be granted except in special circumstances, i.e. builders can build where they want, not where we want them to, clause 2.16. George's Barracks is a brownfield site and like it or not, it will be developed in one way or the other, clause 2.17. The Council for Preservation of Rural England argue that the government has got its figures wrong. The number of houses is not required in the country and Rutland's share is too big. Are you prepared to gamble on the future of Rutland in trying to overturn this government policy? The Council for Preservation of Rural England also argue that additional houses should be scattered around small villages rather than located in a sustainable community. Local service centres such as Wisandine, Market Overton, Ryle, Essendon, Totsmore will have to take a significant number of extra houses. Where is the evidence that these villages want these extra houses? Anyone who lives in a small village knows that most of the residents have to travel everywhere for shopping, work, school, medical services. These are not sustainable communities and should not be continually expanded. Trying to get a consensus among a group of people on widely different interests is never going to be easy, but surely there comes a time when the greater good has to take priority. On a world scale, fighting climate change must be a top priority. On a national scale, it is fighting Covid. At county council level, it is having a local plan. Without it, there is no plan for Rutland. The housing development would be uncontrolled. No one can doubt how long and tortuous the path is in creating a local plan. There is no guarantee that we end up in the same impasse as we are now in four years' time. Is that what you really want? I suggest that the consequences of the recommendation are far worse than continuing with the plan. Please be careful what you wish for. Please reject the recommendation to withdraw the local plan and revisit the decision to reject the hit bid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, you have five minutes. Have you got any questions? Thank you very much, Mr Wilson. We have a deputation from Mr Ron Simpson.
Chairman of the CPR. Even chairman members, I speak on behalf of the president, trustees and executive of CPR E. CPR E is the countryside charity that campaigns to promote, enhance and protect the countryside for everyone's benefit, whichever parish they live in. Here in Rutland, the countryside charity has been engaged in developing local plan from the outset and has submitted a detailed professional response on its current inadequacies with the planning inspectors that propose planning. Rutland is a small community with a history of post-of-county and parish relationships. It is with great sadness that the charity witnesses the creation being created by all the content and the process embodied in the public preparation and approval of the new local plan. The charity therefore welcomes the key officer and presumably the council leadership's recommendation in tonight's report that the local plan be withdrawn, a new plan prepared that might reflect a stronger consensus of community opinion on housing and infrastructure needs. The charity sees the key benefits of accepting the proposed recommendation, withdrawing the submitted plan as follows. The opportunity to found a modified or new plan on the forward vision for Rutland to be identified in the Rutland conversation. The key weakness of the current plan is that it is not linked to any community proof code. Such a decision would pause extensive and expensive legal work being prepared by a wide range of organisations for the pending planning inquiry in what is shaping up to be a memorable conflict. The outcomes for the council are likely to be significant expense and a requirement for substantial change in a submitted plan. The opportunity to restore and strengthen the planning function with additional resources in Rutland, which is clearly believed by many to be more orientated than it should be toward the aspirations and processes of South Kestef and DC. Fourth, an opportunity to revisit the widely disputed future housing requirements program and to correct the extraordinary decision to gift a critical housing application, six fifty homes to STDC and thereby address the reality of the requirement for deliverable value housing. Fifth, the opportunity to strengthen planning policy and development control around MODU land and other similar brownfield sites to reflect their rural setting and effectively resist any undesired future application. And sixth, the opportunity to further support all villages and the county's two market towns in meeting their actual environmental, housing, transport and economic needs by enabling a more community-enabled plans, empowering locally determined site allocation in the assessment of the need. Turning to the further recommendations in the report, the charity has concerns about the predetermined processes, costs and staffing applications put before members of council as necessary to move forward with the new local plan. While accepting the view that it is wise to prepare for receipt of a number of speculative planning applications in the coming months, it is a widely held view that the council's most critical belief is the power of an additional, very senior, qualified and experienced planning officer. He or she would then be able to help the council forward by creating an integrated policy and development control team which is fit for purpose, given the declared direction of government, sorry, declared direction of traveller of governmental planning matters. CPR E Rutland therefore urges the council to give further consideration to the future staffing requirements necessary to deliver an effective local plan that will both sustain and protect the county's heritage and economy. In summary, CPR E Rutland, having considered all the implications and risks detailed in the report, applauds the principal recommendation put before council members to make a fresh start on a new local plan linked to the future vision for Rutland emerging from the Rutland conversation. The charity would prefer to collaborate on such events than win a battle. Members need to look no further than the clarity provided in paragraph 6.2 of the report to understand that the onlooking planning inspector will expect us a decision. It clearly states that a submitted plan is unlikely to meet the required test of sound. It clearly states that the submitted plan is unlikely to meet the required test of sound and the council has advanced withdrawn. If more conviction is required, view paragraph four one, which advises that if the current plan proceeds examination, there is a high risk it will be found to be not sound. As a bonus, those as yet unsure about the recommendation withdrawal can take heart from paragraph twelve four with its proposals for comprehensive community engagement for the future. Surely that is something we can all agree on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, you have five minutes, any questions? Thank you very much, Mr Wilson. We now have a deputation from Mr Andrew Johnson, Chairman of Moorcock Parish Council.
I do not intend to repeat the many valid arguments which support the withdrawing of the current Regulation Nineteen Local Plan, all of which. Oh, sorry. Andrew Johnson, Chairman of Moorcock Parish Council, sorry, I thought you'd, I think you'd seen that in the paper. I'll, I'll start again. I do not intend to repeat the many valid arguments which support the withdrawing of the current Regulation Nineteen Local Plan, all of which are endorsed by Moorcock Parish Council. Instead, I would like to draw your attention to two significant implications of tonight's vote on whether you follow the professional advice of your planning officers or whether you accept the considerable risks of persisting with the discredited Regulation Nineteen Local Plan. Firstly, if you vote to ignore the advice of your professional officers and decide to continue with the current local plan, then the process is far from over and you would be accepting even more risk than the alternative proposed. What are those risks? The first risk is the funding of the infrastructure required by the plan. RCC would still need to find the funding monies to allow the infrastructure to support the plan to be built. This is far from certain and the most interested party in the development has already confirmed that the monies are not available from them. If not fully funded, then the cost of the infrastructure required far exceeds RCC's budget. It is hard to see how this could be achieved. Even if funding was found, the liability implications for RCC are huge in comparison with the annual budget. The second risk is the examination in public by the planning inspector. This is a major hurdle ahead. The EIP will be heavily contested by many local organisations and individuals who have sufficient funding to make a significant impression on the planning inspector. The risk of the current Regulation Nineteen Local Plan being thrown out is very high. Do you really want to accept that this is a risk worth taking for RCC? The chances of mitigating the risk are very low. If you vote tonight to keep the process going with the Regulation Nineteen Local Plan, then this vote is not the end of the process, it is just the beginning of the next stage. Secondly, the places directorate and your planning officers have obviously tried so far to stay with what they were being told was the agenda of the majority of the council. Since the vote on the HIP bid, this has now changed and it is highly significant that the planning officers are now recommending that the current Regulation Nineteen Local Plan be withdrawn. The planning officers, sorry, the planning officers understand the implications of this recommendation and yet their professional advice to you is to withdraw the current plan. This must mean that, taking into account all the implications, they consider that this route represents the lowest risk in moving forward to ensure that Rutland has a viable plan. What are the consequences of you ignoring their professional opinion this evening? If you ignore their advice, then where does this leave them as a team of professionals? If you ignore their advice, what are the implications for Rutland as a viable council? Can you afford the risk of losing the services of the professional officers that you currently have? If you ignore their advice, who else will consider a planning role in Rutland when they know, they know that their professional opinion will not be valued? I put it to you that by voting to withdraw the current local plan, you are choosing the one which has the least risk for Rutland and the greatest chance of succeeding in providing the best future for the county. Thank you.
Members, you have five minutes, any questions? Thank you very much, Mr Wilson. We now have a deputation from Pat Ovington, representing Langham Parish Council.
Good evening, Chairman. I represent the Parish of Langham, my name is Pat Ovington. And my deputation has eight points which cover both the local plan issue and the H I B F vote that led to it. Councilors over twelve months have evidently supported the development of the local plan, which contains details of the development of St George's. It is difficult for us to understand how half of you at the eleventh hour then voted against the local plan by voting against the HIP, knowing that any plan that contains a section that is no longer relevant cannot be passed. Secondly, on March twenty-second meeting, we were told that every councillor had the full facts about the risk and cost implications of refusing the HIP. Therefore, knowing that to vote against HIP would invalidate the local plan, waste over a million pounds invested to date, would likely cost a further million to develop a new plan and would expose Rutland to years of zero or very limited control over planning matters, it is extremely difficult to understand the thinking behind the no vote that half of you cast. Thirdly, the MOD will sell the site at North Loughlinum, so it will be developed. And whoever develops it, there will be individuals and communities who don't like it. At least with Rutland County Council in control, with a robust local plan behind them, Rutland folk will have a say in that development. As it is, we've chosen to hand over the fate of St George's to anyone who wants it and have created an environment where, without the protection of the local plan, developers can do exactly what they want. Obviously, none of you would knowingly have put the county you represent in such an invidious, worrisome and dangerous position. So we would ask you to consider carefully whether you have truly acted in the best interest of Rutland in this instance and seize the opportunity to correct by the situation whilst there is.
As the people can't hear, we're listening in, could you? Sorry.
Do I go back or do I continue, Chair?
No, good, carry on.
Okay. Point four, the situation in which we find ourselves late withdrawal of plan, waste of so much money and leaving the entire county exposed to developer exploitation is unlikely to reassure the powers that be that this county is well-run and capable of remaining independent. We fear that not only will Rutland's reputation be seriously damaged if we withdraw the local plan at its late stage, but longer term, this might lead to the loss of the independence that we value so much. We are told that neighbourhood plans will be more important should there be no local plan. Of course it will be, but they'll also be far less effective because they will not be supported by the power of the local plan. In the battle against uncontrolled development, the local plan provides the paid artillery, the big guns. The neighbourhood plan provides the voluntary foot soldiers. The battle continues, but you have withdrawn the artillery and are effectively telling us that we're on our own for four years and you will be unable to provide the store, the support we have a right to expect. If this happens, you collectively have reneged, perhaps unwittingly, on your promise when elected to protect your communities and the house of Rutland. Sixth, in Langham, our community most wanted a neighbourhood plan to protect us from the same fate of Barleythorpe. We wanted to remain separate from Oakham. So over a hundred people invested four years of their life developing a neighbourhood plan that we were assured would provide the protection we sought with a policy calling for a green separation zone between Oakham and Langham Village. With no local plan to support our defence of the green separation zone, permitted development will trump the only card we have to play. We invested in a neighbourhood plan precisely because we were assured it would add weight to the local plan and provide us the protection we sought. With the local plan under threat, we feel completely betrayed by you. Towns and villages with no neighbourhood plan rely completely on the local plan to protect them from exploitation and they must be extremely worried right now about their immediate future and that their councillors who need to allay their fears will find themselves in the unenviable position of trying to defend the indefensible. My final point, in trying to protect the wishes of our individual communities, it is important to think hard about the alternative and wider implications that may be worse. The intention behind the vote to refuse the HIP was perhaps to reflect the wishes of local communities and to prevent development in St George's, where you can't do the latter. Instead, we have created a far worse situation for those and all other communities in Langham and we have a duty to rectify that situation. So in summary, we collectively find ourselves in a dangerous situation where over the next few years, the beauty and character of Rutland could and almost certainly will be radically changed, if not ruined, by unregulated building and development. It matters not one whit how we got here. Every decision to date has, I'm sure, been taken with the best intentions. But we must accept that those decisions have led us to an extremely precarious position. Between us, we now need to recognise that there's only one way out and we should take it together. We in Langham will support councillors one hundred percent in taking free actions, agreeing today not to withdraw the local plan, but this means you must also agree to revisit the HIP, the HIP vote at the end of September and then at that time, vote to accept the HIP and then, with our local plan firmly in place, work together to protect Rutland and to ensure that St George's development is one in which the residents of Rutland can feel justifiably proud.
Thank you very much. Members, you have five minutes, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Deputation from Tim Smith, Chairman of North Loughlinum Parish Council.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Tim Smith, I am Chair of North Loughlinum Parish Council and I represent them tonight. Towards the end of two thousand and seventeen, I attended a meeting of the council officers who are then parish chair. We thought we were going to be involved in a discussion on the future of the St George's Barracks site. Instead, we were given a presentation along with a glossy brochure on the decision that we now know was made in secret with the Ministry of Defence, a new town bigger than Nottingham. There had been no prior consultation to those communities most likely to be affected by any sort of development at the St George's Barracks site. Yes, consultations followed. I attended them. Two in North Loughlinum, one at the officers' mess, one at Victoria Hall. They weren't meaningful consultations. We're simply invited to tinker around with the main plan. Do you want to support it here or there? There wasn't meaningful consultation when the communities were asked to submit their comments. In response to the question, do you support the proposed changes to the proposed housing requirements? Ninety-five percent were against the development as proposed. You'll find the acknowledgement of these answers in the appendix five, page nine hundred and sixty of the nine hundred and sixty-page document Regulation Nineteen. These answers were simply noted and any proposals for change were just ignored. Even with the St George's Barracks advisory group, which comprised representatives of parish and town councils, Scotland County Council, Regenco and the MOD, it was still the same. After a number of meetings, the only concession was reduced from just over three thousand to two thousand two hundred and fifteen houses. The communities that will be affected by development of the St George's Barracks site recognise that there will be need, there will be a need to be some development when the army indicates the site. In North Loughlinum, we have twice surveyed our residents and the definite response has been that if it has to be houses, then it should be in keeping with a typical Rutland parish. I might add that both North Loughlinum and Edith Weston, our parishes cover St George's Barracks, are advanced in our neighbourhood plans. A master planning board for the site recognised there will be development, but they won't be the same as the RC master plan that it now stands. And does it just have to be houses? There have been plenty of suggestions, alternative heurisies that might actually enhance an area that is right next to Rodden Water, which I hardly need to point out is a major territory attraction. Centre Park's type of attraction, Science Park. Blue side thinking perhaps, but just recall the recent announcement of a film studio in Brockburn, Happershire, with all the inward investment employment that will bring. Is Rutland County Council truly bored of imagination to think creatively? The Rutland County Council votes to submit the emerging local plan examination or reapply for the HIP loan, that it runs the risk, well outlined in this report, and most likely results in the same attritional dialogue and action that have persisted over the past four years. I think Rutland County Council is to be congratulated on its future Rutland conversation, a genuine engagement with the residents. Would not a reset, leading to meaningful consultations for the communities affected, be the best option, which this report emphasises. It is behoped that with new councillors, perhaps reflecting their business opinion of the last four years, a new CEO who we have found does listen to us, there will be that necessary, meaningful and productive dialogue. This report, which argues for withdrawal of the emerging local plan and the new local plan, is well thought out and North Loughlinum is of the opinion that its recommendations should be adopted.
Thank you very much. Members, you have five minutes. Castle Brown.
Andrew Brown, Ward Member for Liddington, thank you, Mr Smith, you mentioned Regenco. I don't know what Regenco is.
That is, that is the firm that was employed with the MOD to come up with master plan at, at, and in St George's. But they also did, I think the, I think I might have said the town down in, or down, Borden, Borden.
Thank you very much. Questions from Chairman, please.
Chairman, thank you. I'm a resident of Tambleton, but I speak and ask my question of personal capacity. I'm interested to optimise a good decision-making process. To do that, I asked this question based on the risk assessment in the paper in front of councillors about the possibility of reconsidering the HIF term. The assessment attaches a high likelihood to the risk that on reconsideration, the terms and conditions attaching to the HIF term would be found to remain unsatisfactory. I address my question, the person presiding at this meeting, I ask, does the person presiding at the meeting agree that a delay of some three weeks before voting on the recommendation to withdraw the local plan would benefit councillors by enabling them to make a better assessment of that likelihood than is possible in the timescale that has been available before the date of this meeting and after the production of the report submitted to the meeting?
Thank you. Response, this is an option in which council could vote, could vote on it, but voted by one and a seconded by another member this evening. Officers' assessment of risk is based on the HIF term as remaining unchanged and members being advised on the risks in relation to the viability of the local plan prior to the original decision about HIP. Councillors will this evening consider the options that have been set before us by officers and reach our own conclusions. If council were to consider that HIP should be brought back, councillors would have an additional opportunity to consider the all, to consider all the issues. You have a supplementary?
Thank you, I would like to supplementary to check that I've understood what I heard, what I hear. What I hear is that it is legally possible and open to councillors. If a councillor proposes it and it is seconded and voted on, it is legally possible to choose to take some additional weeks before addressing the substantive recommendation of, in layman's language, a full and final decision on what to do about the plan.
Well, I'll ask my lead office on that.
The answer is yes, that is possible. In effect, it would be adjourned in the decision.
Thank you very much. Item nine. This is a deputation from Richard Hurwood, please.
Richard Hurwood, I'm a Liddington resident here on my own behalf. Chair, ladies and gentlemen. Three questions. Do councillors think that Rutland's residents have had enough time and information to give our opinions on the withdrawal and rewriting of the local plan? More time might possibly reduce the contentious issue that's mentioned at paragraph two twenty-five of tonight's report. My second point, I think, has already unfortunately sadly been answered by councillor Rizell earlier on. And that is, can Rutland County Council assure us that they'll robustly protect the county from speculative development in the interim if you do decide to go ahead with revising the local plan? And my third point. Are the county councils two decisions firstly to gift the six hundred and fifty houses at Quarry Farm? And secondly, to decline the HIF grant final? One partial solution to easing pressure on our housing requirements would be to claim back the six hundred and fifty houses. We are told that the council continues to monitor and review this whilst holding firm on your decision to decline the HIF grant. Of course, changing either decision risks making it easier for a developer to claim a planning appeals and the like that the council keeps changing its mind. I just wonder, would it be a good idea to ask Rutland residents at this stage what we think of this third point, revisiting the six fifty houses and the HIF grant?
Thank you very much. Members, you have five minutes. I'll have any questions? No?
Thank you, sir.
We now have a deputation for Mr Richard Camp, Vice-Chair of the management parish council.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Did I hear you correctly at the beginning in saying that I was allowed to overrun the time I had to present this slightly?
I'd like you to keep to this text, if you could.
Yes, I'll keep to the text. Thank you. Mr Chairman, councillors and officers, irrespective of the advice in the recent report from the Strategic Director of Places, that the local plan should be withdrawn, it is worth reconsidering some of the other reasons why so many of us think this should be done. First of all, the unacceptable size of the proposed St George's Barracks development. The controversial memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between the council and the MOD states accurately that the adjacent villages, and I quote, will be key stakeholders but will potentially be dwarfed by the size of the new community. The two adjacent villages would surely be unacceptably and permanently swapped. Secondly, regarding democracy and transparency, the above MOU between the council and the MOD regarding the barracks redevelopment as well as the gifting of six hundred and fifty Rutland homes at Quarry Farm to South Caer Steveyn Council were set up without proper transparency or council ratification. Neither of these important planning issues nor the twenty eighteen evolving master plan which was used to support the HIF bid was subject to proper public consultation, contrary to the council's statement of community involvement. Commercial sensitivity has been stated to justify the lack of transparency regarding the content of the HIF bid and the extensive legal and other analysis of its acceptance risk. Furthermore, fifteen parish councils or meetings submitted representations to the inspectorate concerning the local plan that objected to the proposed St George's Barracks development. Only three supported it. Support now by the council for the submitted local plan may suggest a lack of democracy and acceptance of non-transparent process and further confirm the SGB plans as unsound and not legally compliant, at least in the eyes of many, including the local, including the plan inspector. Thirdly, excessive housing developments in Rutland. The local plan indicates that almost forty per cent of residents commute out of the county to work, the majority most likely by car. Now, recent national research shows convincingly that most garden communities become car-based commuter estates. The planned barracks development is thus likely to lead to numerous commuting car trips. There have been no clear evidence, as far as I know, for employers who are interested in business development at the barracks. This and the increased Rutland housing resulting from the gift to South Caer Steveyn Council of six hundred and fifty homes will risk aggravation of the climate emergency. Rural housing, I think, should be more controlled and partly limited to housing for locally employed employees. For example, as others have said, jobs before houses. In line with the National Planning Policy Statement, that sufficient land of the right type should be available in the right places and at the right time for housing. Fourthly, is the St George's Barracks development a potential threat to the town centres of Oakham and Uppingham? The viability and vitality of these two centres has been the subject of a recent report by First Plan Limited, actually published on the Examination Library recently, which states that complacency on this matter is risky. However, the report makes no mention of the potential adverse effects on our two town centres of a large barracks development. Apart from the attraction of football to local SGB facilities, a single large development towards the east may also increase the risk of drawing football to Stamford away from our two towns to their potentially serious detriment. Finally, sorry, fifthly, SGB infrastructure development, the timing extended ultimate cost of this is uncertain, which indicates risk. A recent rather amazing decision, I think, confirms that the SGB electricity supply would be via cables in a trench created by excavation of the highway and or vertes from the substation immediately east of Oakham, southwards via the town pass on the A six side of O three, under the new bridge, up to mountain top and then eastwards towards St George's Barracks. And this almost six mile excavation would be highly disruptive and really unnecessarily very costly. Number six is the barracks brownfield previously developed land. I would argue that it is not all that. The golf club opened almost five decades ago and the airfield has been unused by aircraft since then. It is not justified, I think, to target development on obviously long-standing green land, including precious limestone grassland, by using selective interpretation of National Planning Policy framework principles. Reasonable, reason, sorry, interpretation of the latter indicates that the airfield and golf course should not be considered as brownfields and planning is aimed on them in the St George's Barracks proposed development. It would be of great benefit finally and lower risk to the county if the submitted local plan is withdrawn without delay as recommended and more appropriate redevelopment of St George's Barracks planned urgently, urgently. Any suggestion that a three hundred and fifty home development at St George's Barracks would not be viable is highly open to question. There are thriving villages of that size in Rutland. And finally, of course, the six hundred and fifty home gift to South Caer Steveyn Council should be revoked. Thank you, Chair.
Very much, Mr Brown. Members, five minutes. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, members, could we go back to standing room, those at least? Council, all in favour? Council, all in favour? Questions from members of the council. Do you receive any questions submitted? Thank you. Papers everywhere. This is Report one oh five, stroke twenty twenty-one. Before you hand over to the leader to introduce the report. Russell Hemsworth.
Chair, I'm going to present the council result. Thank you.
Chairman, on the instructions, advice and support of several councillors, we're asked to propose that we adjourn for ten minutes at this point so that we can come back refreshed and address the substantive item.
Is that a proposal? Can I have a second then? Councillor Rizell, all in favour? Abstentions? The proposal for is twelve, against is twelve. Which I will stick to my original vote, that we carry on for the time being. Doesn't mean we won't have a break in a little while, but for a moment. It's only got an hour so far, so I'd like to carry on a little bit longer, please. Russell Hemsworth, Rizell, sorry.
Chair, elected members, chief executive and members of the public. Firstly, tonight, I want to express genuine regret to those who feel let down or lacking representation regarding the position that we are in now. The council, we would all want to do the right thing for our county. And tonight, we really must take that opportunity. Responsibility of an elected member is to make decisions on behalf of their ward and the whole community. Sometimes, that may be relatively straightforward, but equally, it can be incredibly hard or even seem impossible. But whatever we do, it must always be in the best interests of the majority of our thirty-nine thousand residents and the sustainable future of our county. As a council, we vote on matters before us and as that same council, we must take ownership of our collective decision. Even if we did not vote for it for ourselves, that is democracy. The officers then act on those decisions and it should be noted and recorded that they do not make them. The recommendation before you today is to withdraw our submitted local plan. This is recommended because as a council, we approved a local plan to be submitted to the Secretary of State that was dependent on twenty-nine million pounds' worth of government funding. Then, as the same council, we decided to vote down the offer of twenty-nine million pounds for HIF. This second decision made our plan unsound. And despite working tirelessly to save our plan, officers can now only recommend to withdraw it and start again unless we agree tonight that the decision to turn down twenty-nine million pounds and place ourselves in a position where we have no plan was wrong. Over the past months, weeks and days, we have heard many, many voices sharing concern about the risk to our county whilst officers and others work on yet another plan. That new plan will need at least one point four million to enable it. And in the meantime, we are at risk of multiple planning applications in every corner of our beautiful county. I believe the local plan we have is the right one for Rutland. And so, as portfolio holder, I recognise the officer's recommendation, but would move to paragraph four point two and propose that. Council delay withdrawal of the local plan and bring back the housing infrastructure funding option to reconsider accepting the HIF grant after the twenty second of September twenty twenty-one. Homes England has confirmed that there remains an option for the council to enter into a tripartite grant agreement for HIF on the basis proposed earlier this year. Homes England has also indicated that it would be willing to extend the spend deadline to March twenty twenty-five. Assuming this option would require further negotiations with MOD and Homes England and for all parties to commit to the contractual obligations of the grant determination agreement Homes England to the council and the MOD and the allocation agreement, the council and MOD. Mr Chairman, thank you.
That's the proposal. I'll put a second there. Second that.
Information.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I am somewhat confused. I thought the recommendation that we would be discussing is what is set out under decision recommendation one to six on our papers. I apologise, Chairman, I didn't introduce myself, Gail Waller, Normanton Board. I... In the past, we have been told as members that if we're proposing an amendment, which is what I thought councillor Rizell was saying, that we would be given it in writing so we could consider the amendment. I am now confused as to whether councillor Rizell has proposed what is on the papers in front of us or something different, but I have clarification, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Philip Horstfield, the monitoring officer. Councillor Waller, what has been moved isn't an alteration, it's an original motion. The councillor has chosen not to move the recommendation of officers on the paper. He's not required to do that as a proposal. So, there is a, there is a motion on the floor from councillor Rizell to the effect in paragraph four point two, if I heard councillor Rizell correct, second of my councillor Hemsworth. And that is the motion which we must move to debate and discuss.
Thank you very much, Mr Horstfield. May I propose an amendment to that motion?
If I may, Mr Chairman. Amendment to mainly proposed in so far as they don't negative motion us on the table.
Well, as I don't understand what the motion is, because we haven't been given it in writing, I can't be certain that I will be negating it. But my amendment would be to substitute the motion with the recommendations that are before us, numbers one to six on the paper.
Mr Chairman, that can't be done, that would negative motion. This motion has to be dealt with first and then if that, if the motion that is voted falls, then that motion may be put and council can deal with that motion.
Well, can we see the motion then, please? Can we have a written copy of it so we know what we're talking about?
Absolutely, you can.
We'll distribute these, please. Right, I'm adjourned for ten minutes.
This option would require further negotiation with MOD and Homes England, and for all parties to commit to the contractual obligations for the grant determination agreements, Homes England, the council and MOD, and the allocation agreements, the council and MOD. Mr Chairman, I propose it about revisiting HIF.
Thank you, second then.
Second, Chair, I'd speak.
Members, we have five minutes to debate each member, ask questions. And if the, if the proposal falls, go back to the substantive, and you will have another five minutes on that. Open it to the floor. That's the Fox.
I stood to be a Rutland County councillor in March two thousand and seventeen. One of my pleasures, I don't need to stand.
Yes, I think.
And just, I just got a question for the council.
For clarification, Chairman, you mentioned we would return to substantive. This is the substantive.
Sorry, yes, okay. That's the Fox.
So, I'm June Fox, councillor June Fox of Exeter Ward. I stood to be a Rutland County councillor in March two thousand and seventeen. One of my pleasures, pledges was to protect the environment and the countryside. I cannot vote to withdraw the local plan because of the high risks associated with it. I urge my fellow members to vote to revisit the HIF bid as soon after the twenty second of September as possible. This will allow us to vote to get over twenty nine million to put in place the infrastructure our county so desperately needs. Without this money, we will be unable to put in place the roads, the new store, medical centre, shops and utility services first. I can understand councillors in St George's Barracks area will vote as ever wished to, which is understandable. However, the rest of you should think very hard on what you vote for. The local plan and HIF has always been about St George's Barracks. St George's Barracks, another big brownfield site, why would you want to keep it? If we revisit the HIF, developers will be unable to challenge the level of affordable housing required to be provided on viability grounds. Our young people and young families will be able to get onto the housing ladder and not have to waste thousands of pounds per month on rental accommodation or to be without a county. This gives us a chance to require developments to produce an appropriate mix of housing, one to two bedroom status homes which we are currently lacking. It addresses the need to build your own Southfield home. So, my fellow members, be very mindful on how you vote tonight. If you vote to reject the local plan, be prepared to explain your decision to your ward when developers put in their applications for large, high density developments, climbing up having spaces with no enhanced infrastructure in place. Here, we have an opportunity to develop a brownfield site and gain country park for the foreseeable future. I urge you to think for Rutlands by revisiting the HIF bid, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Danes.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Before I start to address the substance of the motion, I'd like to make three things completely clear. First of all, I've spoken to the leader. I've been offered neither threat nor inducement to vote in a particular way. I vote from my conscience. Secondly, there are, in fact, differing opinions around this table and in this room and this county. Whatever decision we reach tonight, I will say to you, Mr Chairman, I will wholeheartedly support whatever we decide, whatever difference I may have with it. And thirdly, I'm quite clear that the officer's recommendation is totally unambiguous. My own position has been clear. St George's will be developed at some point in some way. I would like to see jobs before houses. I'm also clear that the concept of a garden village is something that was introduced by the MOD consultants. It has never been part of the long term planning for Rutland. I think the public would be forgiven for considering that the MOD view, the memorandum of understanding, was characterised by a lethal mixture of arrogance and political myopia. But we must move forward. And I do think that we are addressing three different audiences. We're addressing the MOD, the the whole, sorry, the MOD and Housing England, the planning inspector, and we are also addressing our local communities, as the previous speaker has said. And therefore, it is very difficult. One are looking for the best price for their land. Another are looking to build as many houses as they can. Another are looking to preserve the traditional Rutland. And how do you manage to square that particular thing? I think that if we look at that, we really need evidence to implement planning policy. Traditionally, this is involved in a pattern of two market towns and vibrant villages. We cannot afford to be a rural museum or something that is simply a dormitory village with a few retirement homes in it. We need vibrant villages. It's simplistic to think that St George's will prevent development elsewhere in the county. This would actually go against fundamental planning principles and the current planning hierarchy that we employ. Whichever option we choose tonight, we are in a position that we will be at risk from the five year housing requirement. There is no easy solution. And so, what do we do? Because we can't quantify those risks, there are too many unknowns. So, how do we manage to get out of this dilemma? I don't know, civil publicist, Chairman, no panseer for this, but some suggestions. Mr Vickery's question this evening, based on his professional experience in this field, showed that mitigation of risks of unwanted development is possible. The elements used in the preparation of the draft local plan is already dated, and two vital changes have taken place since its inception. One is moving, which has accelerated the change in people's attitude to work life balance, and in particular, their need to commute to work. Homeworking will become more prevalent. And secondly, the awareness of climate change and the responsibility we all have for that is moving rapidly to the top of the political agenda. A new local plan should recognise and emphasise this. This fresh start, Chairman, would give our officers certainty similar to the external bodies that we have a vision for Rutland and Rutland's future, and would give our successors hope. If I may, Chairman, I will just end on a personal note. A couple of lines have been reverberating in my head as I read and reread opposing views which are sincerely held by members around this table and members of the public. And they are these. Ill fares the land to hastening ills of prey where wealth accumulates and men decay. Either of these lines that open schools, Chairman. I owe great debt to Rutland County Council. The county subsidised my education through the eleven plus, and then an extremely generous university grant. In nineteen sixties, the then chief executive of this council asked me, asked me to speak on behalf of the youth of Rutland at a public meeting. In the nineteen nineties, I gave evidence to the Barnet Commission on behalf of all parish councils in Rutland. And this evening, as far as I'm concerned, is just as significant as those for Rutland's future of all of those. I'm still repaying that debt, Mr Chairman. We need to build on the past, but look to the future. And where did we start? Not with that memorandum of understanding, but at the time of England's darkness there. Rutland, like many counties, requisitioned land in order that we should fight. Okay, thank you, I, one second, thank you, Chairman, you've been a delicate. We were threatened by supposedly very powerful forces. Rutland now faces similar challenges. And I think we need to have the courage, shown to us by our predecessors, to stand up for what we believe in, to emulate that determination to fight against the odds, and to say to future generations, we can give them that most precious and elusive quality, hope. Chairman, I shall not be voting for four point two. Should we have the opportunity, I shall vote for the substantive motion or the original motion on the oral paper. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, Andrew Brown, Liddington Ward. As a relatively new councillor, I'm rather surprised and dismayed at the mess we now find ourselves in. The whole local plan relies on one project being delivered, which was always going to be contentious, namely St George's Barracks. I've tried to take the motion out of this issue, ignore the scare stories on social media, and look at the facts to make an informed decision. We are facing having to spend a large amount of taxpayers' money on whatever we decide tonight. But we are where we are, and there are significant risks to every option on the table. There's an old business adage which I use in farming when a crop is failing. It says, the first loss is the cheapest. And by withdrawing the local plan, we will face significant costs of formulating a new one. But to me, the risks of carrying on with the current local plan are even higher, as the inspector may well find it unsound, after we've thrown more good money after bad. The figure of one point four million for a new plan, I think, is an overestimate, as there will be ongoing costs associated with carrying on with the current plan. So, those costs should be taken off that figure. And I would love to know exactly how much has already been spent on the current local plan, which relied on a project which was never guaranteed, always contentious, risky and politically toxic. Unfortunately, we're in damage limitation territory here, and we need alternatives and a mitigation strategy. There are governmental agencies which can help, such as the Planning Advisory Service and the Planning Inspectorate, and we must take advantage of these, as Mr Vickery suggested. I cannot support the motion to carry on with the current local plan, as it is just kicking the can down the road. And as the officer's report says, it's unlikely that the Defence Infrastructure Organisation would have St George's Barracks viable in time for the examination in public. And even if the HIF spend deadline is extended to March twenty twenty five, it's still an incredibly tight timetable to get all the infrastructure in place and does not take into account the double digit inflation in the construction industry. Legal opinion suggests that the local plan will be deemed unsound by the inspector if no alternative funding for St George's Barracks is found. I think, even if we do continue with the local plan, we will end up in the same position after having wasted more time and even more taxpayers' money. I urge members to take the difficult decision to scrap the local plan and start afresh. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Waller.
Thank you, Chairman. Gail Waller, Normanton Ward. I wish to speak specifically to the motion before us, which is revisiting the HIF decision that we made earlier this year. When I voted in March, I voted on HIF. I did not vote on St George's, I did not vote on the local plan. I felt, and I know a number of my colleagues felt, that the terms and conditions left Rutland County Council with far too many risks. I have seen nothing since then and have read nothing that changes my opinion on this. In fact, I, I would suggest that the situation may well be worse in a month, two or three months' time. If we revisit, all we can revisit is whether or not to consider HIF, because we will not have new terms and conditions on the twenty second of September. Those would have to be renegotiated. And as councillor Brown has mentioned, inflation alone is likely to make the MOD want to revisit the document that identified what HIF would be spent on, which incidentally wasn't a school, health centre and shops. They were in the master plan, but all that was in the HIF bid was the scoping of those, not the actual build of those things, which may well cost more anyway. But that is not my point. My point is, we had risks in March. Pushing it down the road, as has been said, is only going to continue, if not exacerbate, the risk. If we did decide to revisit in a month's time, how many months will it take to negotiate a new HIF? What will happen at the end of that? If it's still unsatisfactory, no doubt we will still reject it. Meanwhile, the whole five year housing supply issue will have been exacerbated because there'll be another six months down the line. And it's all very well to say, oh, but it's been extended to twenty twenty five. We're already six months further on anyway, so that isn't a year extra, it's six months extra in real terms. And furthermore, the site that we are talking about is a fully operational military site. And the military have not withdrawn from it at this moment in time. There are just too many risks in not taking a decision tonight, a firm, clear decision to start again. Our officers, I know, I have been a local authority officer. I know how hard it would have been for them to write this, this paper we have before us. And they have given us their professional opinion. And on the basis of all of that, I think the motion to delay for another month and more, which is what's before us, we have to vote against. Thank you.
Any other members?
Councillor Bill wants to speak.
No, forgive me, I'm also a ward member.
Are you saying the vote is, sorry, Chairman, are you saying the debate has finished? Because I would wish to speak if that is the case. Thank you.
And, Mr Chairman, on hold. Am I entitled to sum up?
Sorry?
Yes, am I entitled to sum up? Be the last.
You're the last to sum up, yeah.
Super, thank you. And, and, sorry, I've got a chairman waiting here, talking to me as well as you, which is disconcerting. But you, you would agree.
I didn't see councillor Bill.
Councillor Bill was advising me about to talk to you.
Yeah, I'm invited to counsel.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Bill.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just think, for the record, councillor Brown would like to speak after myself. I think, I'd just like to base on record, Mr Chairman, that as a member of the Conservative group, not that this amendment should be discussed with me, but obviously, there is, it's in the papers, and I have no reason that this is complete news to me. However, I did, in my preparation for this evening, have a heading of revisiting the HIF grant. And indeed, we have a proposal before us to revisit the HIF grant, which, within our constitution, allows constitution, allows this to happen on the twenty second of September, and allowing for the fact that the grant can indeed be reapplied for. My question, which I think is now going to be rhetorical, is really to say, first of all, what is happened, what has changed in the last six months which would reverse the original vote? In fact, the circumstances, six months down the line, are in fact somewhat worse. And if you remember, the debate had at that time, and therefore I can refer to a councillor across the table, her view was this paper had more holes in it than her calendar at home. And indeed, I have to say, I fully agree with her. The HIF bid, if you recall, had several issues. One of the major ones was the timescale in which to spend the money, March twenty four, which we will now presumably possibly have another year to March twenty five. Okay. But the major flaw with the actual bid, or the grant, of twenty nine point four million pounds, is that it is not index-linked. And if we take the construction industry inflation figure, which I have taken today, it's coming out at five percent, which is based on an eight-year average. And those are the national statistics. Any of you can do that. So therefore, this twenty nine point four, let's call it thirty million, is therefore going to be subject to an erosion of one point five million pounds every year. Put simply, because it was tabled in two thousand and nineteen, do not predict, put simply, by twenty twenty five, and that is allowing for this additional year the report mentions, this twenty nine point four million will have a buying power of circa twenty million pounds or less. So what actually we need, the grant will require circa a ten million pound top-up to stand still. And furthermore, if you do a little bit more research within the internet, as I have done, the indications for inflation this year, they are saying, but we won't know until June of twenty two, are coming out close to ten percent. And there was an article in the paper, in the Gardening Page at the weekend, and said if any of you were buying a garden shed, the price has doubled in two years because of the price of timber. So if you want to question any of my, my figures, they are there on the internet. So therefore, what the proposal before us just cannot stand. Within the HIF figures, as I recall, and councillor Waller will remind me or correct me, I think there was a sixteen million figure for the clean-up. So how can we possibly, with my, even with my candidacy background, which I left many years ago, this cannot run this evening? You will wipe out this county, the same as Northamptonshire has been wiped out. So in all common sense, I have to say to you members, you must vote against this proposal this evening, and we must return to the agenda where I thought we were starting at seven o'clock. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gordon.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'm going to repeat what councillor Ben said. I vote on my own behalf tonight, independent, based on my knowledge and experience, under no injunction or pressure from the Conservative Party or the Conservative leader. Very clear. I was going to say a few words, not about the inaccurate comments that were made earlier this evening, but unfortunately councillor Bull has made that, I have to make those comments. Councillor Bull has indicated that costs, industrial costs, are increasing by five percent. I heard this morning that houses have increased by thirteen percent in the last year. And I'm sure councillor Bull, as an accountant, will appreciate that every year that the costs go up, house prices have gone up. And therefore, what we're looking at is a zero-sum game over a long period of time. And anyway, if councillor Bull had listened to me, unfortunately he didn't, on March the twenty second, he'd have heard me say, the responsibility for costs lies with the MOD, it does not lie with Rutland County Council. If it goes belly up, it's MOD's problem, not ours. And you may recall, I said there were three aspects which we had responsibility for. Planning on highways as an authority, the CPO powers to be used as appropriately, and then finally, the exchange of land to make sure the store is provided. And I point you to the minutes of the meeting, which on this occasion are accurate on that point. So the risks to the council are negligible. Please think about that. And please do not listen to the naysayers who try and make up views and thoughts which are inappropriate. I'm now going to move to the high-level point that I really want to make, and that is by withdrawing the submitted planners, as I think has been supported by a number of members, our officers and the planning committee will be left standing naked in front of the developers without up-to-date policies to protect and enhance our county. Developers will see the opportunity to make money out of this decision, taken, first of all, not except HIF, and therefore are now potentially with non-local plan. We're already seeing this happen in Oakham because of the status of a submitted local plan. We're seeing developers lining up, some already submitting their planning applications in Wissendine, in Market Overton, and not, these are not including local plan, but for different schemes or different numbers of houses. This will become increasingly difficult to resist. But it's not just being forced into accepting some of these sites through the appeal process because we don't have an up-to-date local plan and less than four years' housing supply. I think it's just as important that we have control of development provided by the other excellent policies in this document, this plan that we've already approved. For example, developers will still be able to challenge the level of affordable homes on the grounds of viability, something I believe we all detest, but I would suggest that's not possible with this plan. We're able to require the right mix of houses, which are needed for especially one, two, three-bedroom houses for younger families, which make up eighty percent of requirements. That would not be possible without this local plan. We have a clear plan for gypsies and travellers. That is not possible without this local plan, with the risks that that brings. There are strong policies for net biodiversity gain, something I'm sure we all want to see. That is not possible without this local plan in the short term. There's a requirement in this plan for developers to demonstrate that houses will minimise CO2 emissions, use less water, and contribute to low carbon travel. That will not be possible in the short term, the next three to four years, without this plan. I could go on, but I'll go through every policy, but we don't have time for that. Voting in a way to throw out this plan is like throwing the baby out of the bathwater. Officers have been very frank and honest about the timescales for the new plan, and please do not question their integrity. We had enough of that in March. Overall, these timescales are realistic, but in my view, optimistic, especially as no time is allowed for Parker and the elections of twenty twenty three. It is therefore unlikely the plan will have sufficient weight in planning matters before late twenty twenty four and have substantial weight until the end of twenty twenty five. So we'll be left naked for the next four years. And looking around this room, that's a pretty horrible sight. Add to that the one point four million of extra costs. I'm up, am I? Right, I'll just finish then. So let us revisit the HIF and see if we can reach accommodation which allows us to work together, stop unwanted development in Rutland, save one point four million, protect the green fields, the green fields of Rutland, obtain the benefits from these excellent policies and an excellent local plan. I support the proposition that we consider the HIF after the twenty second of September, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Alan Walters, representing Oakham North East. I'm slightly jealous, some people seem to have prepared speeches, so my apologies if I stumble. Councillor Andrew Brown talked about threats. He then told us the plan may fail. I don't know where he gets that from. Councillor Bull said it will be bankrupt, it'll be like Northamptonshire. I don't know where he gets that from, and I don't see how that could be called anything other than a threat. I don't normally refer to individual people speaking in their deputations, but Mr Johnson tells us that the plan would be heavily contested by many local organisations and individuals who, get this, Chairman, have sufficient funding to make a significant impression on the planning inspector. If that isn't a threat, I don't know what is. But when we talk about not having a five-year housing supply, that isn't a threat, that's a reality. And it happens. Development happens that we don't want. Miss Waller disagreed with me when I said Spiny Hill happened because we didn't have a five-year housing supply or suggested people might make up their own minds. But anyone who was here at the time will know, yes, it went to the inspector because it wasn't determined in time, but the reason Spiny Hill went ahead was because we didn't have a five-year housing supply. And it will go on, and we won't be able to stop it. Mr Johnson talked about the risks that if the funding of the infrastructure required by the plan, RCC would still need to find the funding to allow the infrastructure to support the plan to be built if we went ahead with the plan without the HIF funding. The important thing is that we do revisit the HIF funding. If we don't revisit the HIF decision, then it will be more difficult to fund infrastructure to support additional housing, as the developments will be dispersed across the county, creating high local need that will never be met by small amounts of local silver monies. It is much more effective to have it in one place, to have the HIF money, and to be able to put into place that infrastructure. Miss Waller, I'm sure quite correctly points out that the HIF funding was not to build a new medical centre. Well, I'm sure that's true. But I can also tell you, I sit on the Health Infrastructure Group with our CCG colleagues, and there is an understanding that if St George's goes ahead, and we know where people are going to live, that they can in fact put something in place, and their commitment to us, and I believe our leader, Mr Hemsey, was there in the same meeting, was that something would be there to support development for the first ten years, and would then be reviewed again for the following ten years. If we do not review HIF, St George's will not go ahead in its current form, the local plan will not go ahead in its current form. The answer I got from that group was, well, that would be much more difficult. I took that as, you're not going to get anything. Chairman was talking at the moment on the substantive about the HIF, but I think it's worth just talking slightly about what was mentioned by CPRE, because I think this goes to the crux of it. And Mr Simpson said CPRE is the countryside charity that campaigns to promote, enhance and protect the countryside for everyone's benefit, whichever parish they live in. And I would ask this question then. If this is the case, why is CPRE campaigning to prevent development on a brownfield site and asking that building takes place instead on virgin greenfield sites? He also said a new plan would offer the opportunity to strengthen planning policy and development control around, and I quote, "MOD-owned land and other similar brownfield sites." And I'm very grateful, Mr Simpson, for confirming CPRE have the same understanding as us, that former MOD sites are indeed brownfield sites. He also said the charity would prefer to collaborate with such a venture, that is to say, a new plan, rather than win a battle at a planning inquiry. Which leads me to ask a question. Why would CPRE be using what is presumably charity funding to begin legal matters against a plan to build on a brownfield site by its own definition, if its stated aim is to protect the countryside, and it agrees, as I say, that the MOD sites is a brownfield site? So I'm sorry, I think some people do regret their decision that they made earlier this year. We won't know unless we put that to the vote, and the only way we can put that to the vote is if we go back and reconsider that, consider the decision we made about HIF funding. I'm sure that everyone made it in what they believed were the best interests of this county. I believe they hoped something else would come along. Well, nothing else has come along, except the risk of unlimited, uncontrolled development on our greenfield sites. I support the motion, and I hope everyone else in all conscience will do the same. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Cartney, Councillor Ward. I have no desire to stand naked in front of the planning committee, or any committee for that matter. My inflationary calculations matched councillor Bull's near enough and suggested that the HIF would need to be in the region of forty million pounds by the time spent. It's not for houses, it is to make the site as a whole viable, but it has to be spent long before the houses are sold and long before their inflated values are recouped back to us. We have to spend that money, and we have to see it leave our account. I have a lot of sympathy for councillor Brown's statement about the plan enshrining our powers to enforce affordable homes and our ability to pin developers down to provide those affordable homes in the plan he has on the desk in front of him. I was at the planning committee last week when I had, I shared the misfortune with some of the other members here of hearing a four-bedroom house described on a development park of one of the smaller properties. I don't like hearing four-bedroom houses described as smaller properties when we are in dire need of affordable housing. But I decided to come tonight with a bit of a more conciliatory tone than I have perhaps taken in previous council meetings discussing this matter. There would be no columners, I decided, no references to former Soviet leaders. All I see tonight, Chair, is a dead horse, and I've no wish to froggy.
Thank you very much. I don't envy any of us this evening making this decision. Effectively, we are in Rutland's Brexit. Polarised views, we know that whatever decision is taken, there will be people who will applaud, and there will be people who are in vehement disagreement. So for us this evening, our job is to review the professional advice, to weigh up risk and to weigh up the likelihood of that happening. We really need to avoid speculating, because actually it is distracting. I appreciate there are some slight unknowns in the paper, but we really need to focus on facts. I also thought it would be helpful if we started with finding some common ground. I'm echoing your conciliatory nature. Actually, we all care about Rutland. Rutland is a great place to live, and we love it very, very much indeed. We also know that there will be development. We also know that that development needs to be planned carefully and holistically. We therefore know a robust local plan is an absolutely crucial piece of that. I'm sure there'll be some people thinking here, exactly, Mrs Stevenson, this is why we should be going to scratch, back to scratch. I'm afraid I don't agree with you. We need to remember the national context. Rutland isn't an island. We're living in a country where the last an island. We're living in a country where the last BBC housing brief of 2020, they identified a shortage of 1 million homes. The government has set a target of 300,000 homes a year. We have a planning white paper that favours development, albeit they put in inverted commas, sustainable. Our sustainable, I suspect, will be somewhat different to the sustainable in an urban area. We have the National Planning Policy Framework, and I'd also like to just highlight 2.21 in the paper for this. It will be important to prepare a new local plan in a timely fashion as there is a government requirement that a plan is adopted by the end of 2023. Now, I am not an accountant, nor am I a mathematician. That, I think, is two years, three months. The paper has said three to four years. I am inclined to agree with councillor Gordon Brown that I think that we will be near a five-year mark allowing for elections. I think we are going to be in a position, and I appreciate the paper says that there is a chance, there's a likelihood, it's up to us to weigh up what the likelihood is of Secretary of State intervention. I would then suggest that we need to reflect on what is actually the sticking point. The sticking point is a 300 hectare military base coming to the end of, I think it will be 84 years, of military usage. I'm not an expert, I know that land is contaminated. That military base is not going to go away. The DIO wished to sell it. They wished to work in partnership with the local people through the elected representatives. I appreciate the crossness over the MOU, I really, really do. Nobody likes not to be listened to. However, it has been signed, we are here, we learn from history, we don't use history to punish the future generations of this county, which I believe it runs the risk of doing. So, members, I fully support the opportunity to return to the HIF bid, not least because actually there are people in our community who welcome that opportunity, and we heard from those people this evening. And they also have a right to be listened to. If we decide to withdraw our local plan, we're going back. Yes, we're refreshing it three to four years' time, housing supply issues, we will be dealing with planning applications on an individual basis. I don't think that is good. It doesn't mean that we are able to deliver shared ambitions. We potentially are looking at the most costly deferral decision through the back door by default because that MOD barracks will be given as a sign. It will be looked at in terms of being brownfield. The Secretary of State agrees with that description regardless of what anybody says in this room. It is crown land. They have got additional planning powers over it. So, members, I really think that we must have that opportunity to revisit HIF. Councillor Waller, you always raise very, very sensible questions and points. Councillor Bull, you know that I respect your accountancy skills. Let's give us a chance to really drill the base because I fear if we withdraw this local plan, we really are on a course for a Rutland that none of us particularly wanted to plan. We need to be proactive, not reactive. Thank you. I think I might be asked to have time now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Mark Oxlade, councillor for Uppingham. And I must state that, first of all, that it has not been an easy ride on this. The vast majority of people who are not of a Conservative persuasion are against most of what was proposed by those of a Conservative persuasion on the council. I thought I'd better make that point stridently. It's not been an easy ride. The decision we are asked to make this evening is the hardest I've been, I have had to make since first being elected to this council in 2003. I can speak with some experience with regards to the local plan process, having been involved in two previous local plans as well as the planning process, having served the people of Rutland on the planning committee since 2005. I do not use the term "served" lightly in this sense. I take the role very seriously. Every planning application must be looked at on its own merits, irrespective of outside issues like housing supply numbers or the threat of a judicial review or appeal costs, in my opinion. That has been the basis of every decision I've been asked to make on planning applications since 2005. We should look at each application on its own merits. That's written tablets of stone. Looking back to past local plans, members debated the spatial strategy, which was at the heart of the draft local plan, and left officers to oversee the call for sites, et cetera. What we were left at, left with at the end was voted on and signed off by full council, usually with very few concerns raised. All that changed in 2017. Prior to that, the emerging draft plan, as before, was discernibly based on rules not difficult in a military authority of the size of Rutland. But overnight, we were informed that the army planned to close St George's Barracks and build a settlement the size of Uppingham in its place, possibly beginning as early as 2021. This totally changed the spatial strategy, which was at the heart of our existing local plan, which was pretty much being followed through into our emerging draft local plan, the one we are debating this evening. Furthermore, we then had news of a possibly similar-sized development in Woolfox, which has come to nothing so far, as well as Quarry Farm on the edge of Stamford, leaving us with more questions than answers on how we should progress our emerging plan. I do believe too much weight was given to SGB as part of our emerging draft local plan. Ideally, it should have been looked at as and when the site came on stream as a supplementary to our new local plan, rather than treating it as though it was a given. But we had to apply for and then oversee additional funds in the form of the HIF bid in order to clean up the base, making it fit for purpose prior to any planning application for housing. Unprecedented, it just made the decision harder. When we voted in favour of applying for the HIF back in 2019, just before the last election, I was persuaded to vote in favour, to assist in hopefully bringing forward a project which would benefit the wider community. There was no guarantee we would be successful, but we were told the benefits outweighed the risks if it came off. However, it soon became apparent that we would have a long road ahead of us before we would be able to see the benefits, and there were still many unanswered questions. I abstained on the vote in February as despite being much more informed on the subject, I still not could not reconcile the advantages of the project against the disadvantages of building such a large development, a long way from any main roads or sizable settlements. Part of me agreed with it out of a real concern for the risk it might have on our local plan if it failed, and part of me didn't, as I couldn't get to grips with another town the size of Uppingham being built where it's proposed, and so I had to abstain. I still cannot reconcile the pros against the cons. And whilst I will wait to hear what other members have to say before making my final decision, I fear the way it stands at present, I would have to support the officer's recommendation so I will not be supporting the substantive motion. Something I have always tried to do, as they are best placed to advise us based on their knowledge and experience. We are very blessed to have the officers we have in Rutland. But I will wholeheartedly support the decision that we take this evening, the final decision, irrespective of whether I vote for the majority or not, as we must all work hard to heal the divisions which have split this council in recent months. We must try to find a way to regain the confidence we had in our ability to work unilaterally for the benefit of the wider community who elected us to represent them in this place and whose interests we are here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Bevan. Thank you, Chair. My technology keeps growing itself at 250%, but I'll do my best. Fellow councillors, this is way very heavy on my mind. I haven't taken this lightly, it's been a very difficult decision. And regardless of opinion, I respect the opinions of every single one of you around this table. Every single one of you wants what is best for Rutland. We have to make some brave decisions tonight. We won't agree, but as many people have said, whatever decision it is, I will support it and move on. But what I see, we're in a position that without a local plan, we are opening ourselves up to uncontrolled development. I see that as my position as Ward member for Grieven, and we have a great deal of fear that this will be in other villages. Cotusmore, Ashwell, Market Overton, Wissendine, as the large service centres, they're the ones that are going to suffer. We all circulated a letter this week from the Secretary of State, which clearly pointed out that the St George's Barracks is a brownfield site. That's fact. We can't get around that. That is key in my mind. I really did want to see this as a greenfield site, but we brought it back as a, back to its natural environment, but it is categorically, in writing, a brownfield site. Categorically, the minister said that it would be vacated by 2024. Again, I see the risk of them not vacating, but it has been clear that they can start the work when the military is still on base, and the minister has said that they will be vacated. So that's another risk that I don't, I don't see. All I can see is that without a local plan, all of the controls and protection that we have as Rutlanders will be taken away. And I, talking to my ward, my residents in my ward and the residents around Oakham South where I live, there is a huge amount of fear about what could happen. Looking at Oakham South, already Jekins Ware put out a consultation on a site which isn't in our local plan, which potentially, without a five-year housing supply, could add to another green space being removed. What I see is the opportunity to revisit the HIF fund, to allow us to have a local plan in place to protect not just Conservatives, but every single one of you and your villages, your towns, from development which we don't necessarily need. When there was a brownfield site which is going to be developed, whatever we think, we have the opportunity to grasp that with two hands, move on, work together, cross-party to deliver a better Rutland. I'm doing this for what I think is best for Rutland, not from what I've been told to vote by the Conservatives, but someone who's lived here since the age of 12 and wants to live here for the rest of my life and bring my family up in an environment and villages which are as we want them to be. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Chair. No dispensations, please remain seated. councillor Harvey, Cottlesmore Ward. As a councillor elected in 2019 along with a law colleague, we inherited a local plan. To date, it has cost 1.193 million and taken six years. We're now being asked to start again, costing a further one and a half million and taking at least four years. The risks to Rutland are clear. If we were to revisit it, it would put us in the position of ensuring infrastructure up front, controlled development and the ability for RCC and importantly, our public service providers such as the NHS to plan in a coordinated way for the benefit of all Rutlanders. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. Richard Coleman, Ward member for Ryle, Essendon and the Castetans. So I have spent extensive amount of times spent with our parish chairs from within the ward, and all but one reluctantly agree that the risk of having uncontrolled development outweighs that risk of not having a local plan. We still have a lot of concerns about the 1,300 homes that are going to be built at Stamford North, but in terms of having no mention of increasing medical provision, as we're already in a poor state, and again, access to the A1, they feel that there will be a mass increase to villages in the A, going through the villages, sorry, to the A1. They understand, despite these risks, that the only way forward for them is to continue with the current local plan. All of them genuinely feel, and I quote, "we are caught between a rock and a hard place, and personally haven't had conversations with other members of this council." The general response has always seemed to be, well, what's the alternative? In my humble opinion, the question that we should really be asking is why has that only been the only alternative? There doesn't seem to be a gold-plated solution to hang my hat on, and the element of risk, I'm acutely aware that some of us as junior councillors in this room have essentially picked this up after only two years in the seat. However, balancing no local plan, uncontrolled development, lack of housing supply, potential changes in planning policy and legislation against carrying on with a local plan, re-examining HIF options, facing potential legal challenges, that is the very definition of the rock and the hard place. That said, as we are sure, and I'm sure councillor Rosell will actually back me up from our time in the armed forces, no plan ever survives first contact, but we must improve, adapt, improvise and overcome. I would like to applaud the CEO and the officers for their efforts in spending time to look at other viable options for the Housing Infrastructure Fund. Unfortunately, as though it hasn't come to anything, I still wish to thank them. Having deliberated over this issue for some time now, there have been numerous updates for additional information, but councillors must now vote using a combination of not just our gut instincts, but the voices of those in our parishes, which I feel I will have to do tonight, and therefore vote in favour of keeping the local plan. Thank you.
councillor Payne.
Thank you, Chair. Karen Payne, Ketten Ward. Mister Chairman, members will be aware that in addition to other pressures and risks, there is also a financial one to be considered if we withdraw the plan tonight. I do not understand the logic of this committee that voted to submit the current local plan at the end of last year, incurring a cost of 1.2 million in its composition, and then wished to withdraw it and spend at least four years writing another one at a budgeted cost of 1.4 million. This comes from the council's general fund reserves, which is money received from council taxpayers. I similarly don't believe the majority of our council taxpayers would welcome this either. This has a negative impact on our general fund reserves and our medium-term financial plan, reducing them down from 11.1 million to 9.6 million in 2223, creating serious financial pressures for the council, not to mention the other pressures it generates, especially that of uncontrollable housing development in small rural communities, which none of us want. Certainly, the residents of my ward, Ketten, don't want this. These risks are well understood and presented in the factual and well-articulated deputation we heard tonight from Langham Parish Council, who also point out that even though they have a neighbourhood plan, it cannot be fully effective without the framework of the local plan within which it sits. And Langham provided an excellent example of this. If there is a vote to withdraw the local plan tonight, Rutlanders need to be aware that even those with fully adopted neighbourhood plans will be subject to unregulated developments. Moving back to the subject of finance and risk, skill for negotiation by council officers remove financial risks to the council of accepting the HIF associated with the local plan. The allocations agreement documents the removal of this risk in paragraph 3.3, making the MOD responsible for any cost overruns or delays within St George's development, not Rutland County Council. Therefore, in the interest of being prudent, safeguarding our council taxpayers' money, removing the risk to Rutland towns and villages of uncontrolled development, and in an attempt to secure a sound financial base for the council, I am fully in support of continuing the path of the submitted local plan and revisiting the HIF bid for the betterment of Rutland. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, so I'm councillor Boris, I'm the ward councillor for Oakham South. Over the past months, I've read hundreds of pages of documents and emails and spent a lot of time listening to residents from around Rutland voice their opinions and their concerns. Concerns not only on the content of this local plan, but also about the flawed decision-making process, the lack of transparency and lack of accountability, including the most unbelievable gifting of the 650 houses, as asked this even that we've heard a lot about, that have led thus to this tragically difficult decision that we're here to make tonight. We've just completed the future Rutland conversation. I've been stressing how important our residents' views are to us. So I've been particularly interested in discussions I and colleagues have had on hundreds of doorsteps over the last month or so. have had on hundreds of doorsteps over the last month or so. Residents who cannot be accused of NIMBYism have asked us hard questions about where we are with our planning and have engaged us in often animated discussions. What I have not heard is any level of support for a plan which includes a high-risk garden village at St George's Barracks with its many uncertainties. Our residents are not stupid. We must not treat them as such. We need to explain to them that 29.4 million promised to us by the HIF grant in 2019 is now worked around, what are arguably 10% less due to inflation on both wages and the building materials needed to build the infrastructure, and that work will not start for another four years or so, that was with additional inflation over that time. They understand the risks. They understand that we'd be in a position where we'd be starting work on this development, the cost of which, if not completed for some reason, would have to be repaid by Rutland County Council, potentially bankrupting our authority. They understand that the affordable housing element of the development, housing so sought after by our residents so their children can live in the county, won't come on stream for about 20 years. They also understand that when budgets get tight, builders negotiate their way out of affordable parts of building development. So those affordable houses, in fact, never come on stream. I think the landslide vote from my Lib Dem colleague here, Paul Brown, in the recent South Open Ward by-election, when he received 886 votes to the Conservative candidate's 420 votes, despite us being open that he and I did not support this plan, further endorses this understanding and confirms our residents' views. I also believe that we employ wise and experienced officers who have access to leadership. I find it a very sad state of affairs that takes some explaining if we do not now listen to them and revisit the HIF funding. Since we received their recommendation that we withdraw this plan, we've been given ample opportunity to voice our concerns and have had all our questions answered in full. And nothing I have heard during this scrutiny of the officer's recommendation has led me to believe that we are being misled by those that we employ to advise us. I will not be voting for this as such a motion. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Chair. councillor Hemsey for the ward of Langham. Tonight, we have arrived at a point which has been driven by decisions that we have made over a period of time. And first of all, I would like to say, any future plan, whatever it looks like, it will include St George's. And it will probably never deliver a perfect Rutland village. What we are saying to many of our members of communities is you've elected us to make some of those decisions. And some of them are difficult, some of them are very difficult, and some may be too difficult. But we don't want to continue by making mistakes. And I believe that we've already made a mistake and we have a chance to correct this. I trust that all of you have a look at the report of Future Rutland Conversation that was shared with you all. We have a clear sense of direction from this. Just the headlines that come through are the need to protect the rurality of Rutland, need to ensure that opportunities are available for all, and we have good healthcare, and we plan for our future. I hear that we should wait until we have more details. And I'll just look back at a gentleman called Columbus. And luckily, he took the decision to leave the harbour without all the details that we have today. And we rely on some of the faith that we have from dedicated officers to support and help when we need it. There's been a discussion about 650 homes and the fact that we gifted them to South Castlevan. We are in a strategic housing market area and we have a duty to cooperate with them. You could argue that duty to cooperate was based around urban areas, but it is actually a duty to cooperate, full stop. And we gave them those homes because we would not build 650 homes up on that land. And our current local plan, if it's withdrawn, means that those 650 homes wouldn't happen until we address that. I think it's okay to look at where we are and admit that we might not have got what we expected. I believe it is not too late to make the right decision and give the whole of Rutland the protection that they expect and deserve. And this includes the residents of the surround of the one site that seems to have caused so many concerns. And especially these residents need to know that we will continue to work hard on their behalf. The risks for Rutland, either way, are outlined in the papers. But there are other risks, whether about Rutland's ability to attract quality staff, be taken seriously in the halls of power, be respected as a genuine partner in local and national discussions, the opportunity to have a seat at the fair of funding review and have a choice in our destiny. Is this what we are willing to put on the table as a flagship? I know if we do not take ourselves seriously, then why should others? And that includes our staff, who along this journey have been with us step by step. And now we are risking saying, sorry, we doubt your work, but please continue to work for us. We've made a series of decisions that have led us to this point. But as mentioned previously, officers are only able to advise on facts. Hence the paper, their integrity and their professionalism is not in question. And I understand that they are keen for us to give them a clear mandate that we need to move forward. So in summing up, what are the choices? Turn left or turn right? If we turn right, we have three-plus years of a journey to come back to the same point. We do not pass go, we rack up round about 1.3 million pounds of additional spend, or do the logical thing and turn left. We understand that we have an opportunity to revisit a decision that on reflection was not the best choice, and accept an initial inward investment of 29.4 million and continue to benefit from the, sorry, continue to benefit from the inward investment it gives employment. And that could be a real benefit to our entrepreneurial and innovative businesses already in Rutland. And we can actually draw for other businesses that we could continue to call, should we have the opportunity to make the offer. Sadly, currently, we have little to offer. And that will also be the case until we have the new local plan. I fully understand the risks, but if we take control and work with Emplingham, Edith Weston, North Loughlin, Ketten, Manton and Morquet and the rest of the county, we could ensure that our future is in our control and we can influence the detail of the development and the whole of Rutland's benefit. We need to be supporting the whole of Rutland and looking at the housing and business opportunities. And if we had been brave sooner, we might have seen a new film studio opening in Rutland, which I believe was mentioned in somebody's report earlier. We have some incredible businesses in our county and we need to support them, or they will relocate and the opportunities will move with them. The decision of tonight is not for us and probably not for the generation after us, but for the generations that follow. And we are tasked with thinking beyond our own position and to take the tough decision that comes with election to a county councillor. And this is one of those that is not a political one. And to be very clear, I do not use the whip, I know it's been mentioned before, but I do believe that all members should have a completely free vote on this. And I rely on all of you to make up your own minds about what future generations need. And luckily, Columbus did leave the harbour, and he did that with an understanding of the risks. Let us be like him and set sail and learn to manage the risks as our residents would expect, revisit the decision on HIF, and set a clear course for a strong future for Rutland as a county and a respected member of the East Midlands and UK PLC, and a great place to live, work and play. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Member of order, Chair. Can we have a proposal for this? Take a pause. All in favour? Sorry, second. Thank you. No. Anybody else other than councillor? Yeah, okay. councillor Enzie.
Okay, I'm going to turn my name round for you. Well, we do indeed find ourselves between a rock and a hard place. And it is a very difficult decision that we make tonight, but... I'd really like to say that I want to speak not only on behalf of my constituency, but of our young people and young families. And I also want to speak for the 400-plus Rutlanders who applied for social housing but don't have a house forgiven. I also want to support the solemn adjutant of our young people and families that cry out for social housing, employment and a community that meets their needs. All too often, youngsters are forced to leave Rutland because they can't afford to live here. It's that simple, really, isn't it? And I really do support a sensitive designed garden village with appropriate community and place-making facilities. I speak against those that supported the local plan, but then did a vote defacing the boat down the HIF grant. The reasons given for opposing the HIF grant, and I've heard a couple of them again tonight, were many and often tenuous. My two favourite pieces of this information are as follows. RCC could be bankrupted if the St George's development was not delivered on time or not to cost. This is a gross misrepresentation of the facts contained in the confidential allocation agreement, which clearly explained that the RCC's role was one of book. We, as a public body, have no financial liability other than 110,000 historical costs. All other financial risks lie with the MOD. RCC have responsibility for planning, high rates and compulsory purchase orders. Nothing new there. I also hear that the two villages adjacent to St George's would surely be unacceptably and permanently swamped. Swamped? Swamped by whom? Are we not all Rutlanders with a lethal stake in the future? It is implied that we should not pursue a self-contained garden community for fear of swamping those villages adjacent. So where are we going to build them? On our service centres, our greenfield sites? St George's is a brownfield site and will be developed by the MOD. Surely far better to vote to reconsider the HIF grant and vote to support our young people and families. And let's not forget, of course, there is the elephant in the room, but an additional 1.3 million pound spend to create a new local plan when we are running a substantial 2 million deficit. I fully support this motion and hope that this time around, we'll vote to reconsider its position on the 22nd and will vote for the good of Rutland, its people and St George's. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Rosell, do you want to say?
Chairman, I don't really have anything prepared amongst you. And as you would expect, I've listened to people tonight. I've heard CPR talk about a battle. I've heard about toxicity from councillor Brown. I've heard about attrition dialogue. I've heard lots of I-thinks and special moments where we discuss garden sheds. Incidentally, garden sheds are the same price now as they were in 2019. I bought one this week. Division is still in place. That is regrettable, I think, across all 27 of us. I don't think any of us here want to disagree, but it is still there and we need to find a way through that. And we've heard very eloquent comment from across the whole of the council tonight. I don't think we've heard enough about health. I don't think we've heard enough about housing or education or jobs. We certainly haven't heard very much about the future of our young people. Many of us will have children who started school this week or perhaps started sixth form this week. If we look around the room, the average age here is probably around about my age, 56. That's regrettable. We're talking about our future generations and what they will inherit. And it's wonderful that organisations and individuals who have sufficient funding to make a significant impression on the planning inspector can make themselves so publicly aware and available. I'm sure that all of Rutland will remember where those comments came from. Guidance and opinion tonight has come from our older generation. Where is the ear of our younger family? Where is the ear of our younger people? When will we stop and think about the fact that we are just temporary custodians? Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Put it to the vote.
I move for recorded vote, Chair.
Sorry?
I'll move for recorded vote. Seconded.
Have a second of councillor Cross. All in favour, record the vote.
In favour?
Space.
Against.
councillor Baggy?
In favour.
councillor Blacksey?
Against.
councillor Ball?
Against.
councillor Abraham?
Against.
councillor G Brown?
In favour.
councillor P Brown?
Against.
councillor Burris?
Against.
councillor Coleman?
In favour.
councillor Cross?
Against.
councillor Day?
Against.
councillor Fox?
In favour.
councillor Harvey?
In favour.
councillor Hemslay?
In favour.
councillor Jones?
Against.
councillor Low?
In favour.
councillor Parton?
Against.
councillor Oxley?
Against.
councillor Payne?
In favour.
councillor Powell?
Against.
councillor Rosell?
In favour.
councillor Stevenson?
In favour.
councillor Waller?
Against.
councillor Walters?
Four.
councillor Webb?
Against.
and councillor Wilby?
Four.
Thank you.
Yeah, the vote is 13, 4 and 14 against, send a motion. We'll have an adjournment in 10 minutes and we'll come back.
That we go back into suspending standing orders, that's the only way we can get a conclusion tonight, and we need a second.
councillor Cross, second. All in favour? 16 against. Yeah, the motion for standing orders is carried. So we go back to original recommendations, but have a proposal, please. councillor Waller and second of councillor Cross.
If I may, Mister Chairman, just for the benefit of the audio recording and for clarity of what's happened, councillor Waller has proposed the motions as set out in the paper and councillor Cross has seconded that motion.
Thank you. We've not got a lot of time, members, so does any member want to speak on that?
Mister Chair, could I propose that this be put to members immediately? We've had an awful lot of discussion and I think we could...
Objection.
We could resolve this pretty quickly. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, yeah.
I would like to take members if they're quick, please. We haven't got a lot of time.
Is that a lot to me? Come on. Just, sorry, just, just, councillor, councillor Cross will need to withdraw that particular motion because if that finds an immediate second, it has to be put without further debate.
because if that finds an immediate second, it has to be put without further debate, so.
Sorry, sir, I'm sitting firm on that, I'm pretty-
A proposal, a second there. All in favour for going straight to the vote?
Would everybody please raise their hand to indicate very clearly so we can get it out there?
Fourteen against.
Eleven?
Eleven against, abstentions. So on that, we'll go straight to the vote then. Mr. Chairman, can I ask that we actually read out what we are voting on for the benefit of those people who are listening? That council withdrew the submitted local plan submitted to government in February twenty twenty-one under Regulation twenty-two of Local Plans Regulations from the process of examination in public following the decision made by council on the twenty-second of March twenty twenty-one not to accept the offer of two twenty-nine point four million housing investment for grant funding, which was impacted, which has impacted the viability and deliverability of the proposed St George's garden, which scheme, and therefore the wider development strategy affecting the soundness of the local plan. Two approves the creation of a earmarked reserve of one point three nine five million to resource the making of a new local plan for the county and operating with our, and operating with our plan as detailed in section five. And that authority be delegated to the Strategic Director of Places and the section one five one officer in consultation with the portfolio holder for planning and the portfolio holder for finance, governance and performance. Change and transformation to release funds from the earmarked reserve as required. Three approves that the council receives a portability statement of the budget position in light of the cost uncertainty so that it can track whether the earmarked reserve is sufficient or can be released accordingly. Four approves the need to positively prepare and submit a new local plan informed by an updated evidence base for the benefit of the county of Rutland, its residents and businesses that will. One, deliver the corporate plan vision and themes for the county. Two, provide for substantial growth to meet its objectively assessed housing and employment needs. Utilising and promoting sustainable transport wherever possible, which will combined contribute towards achieving the government's net zero carbon emissions twenty fifty target. Three, protect and enhance the county's heritage, character and natural capital, including air quality, water resource, management and biodiversity. And four, ensure the timely, forceful, ensure the timely delivery of all necessary infrastructure. Five, approves the development of robust and effective strategic partnerships to support plan making through the duty to cooperate and required for a viable, deliverable and sound plan. Six approves the establishment of a cross-party group to provide oversight of the process of making a new local plan and delegates authority to the Strategic Director of Places in consultation with the portfolio holder for planning to establish a governance structure in line with the corporate project management government's framework.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. For two, it actually says, provide for sustainable growth and not substantial, which is what I believe.
Sorry, my apologies. Chair, I move for recorded vote. Yes. Yeah. Recorded vote, have a good proposal, second there, all in favour?
Recorded vote.
Yes.
Recorded vote.
It supports the people listening.
Yeah, yeah, no, just checking what I'm voting for.
Yeah.
Against. Abstentions. Okay, yeah.
Councillor Hensley?
Against.
Councillor Baines?
Four.
Councillor Baggy?
Stayed.
Councillor Blacksey?
Four.
Councillor Ball?
Four.
Councillor Abraham?
Four.
Councillor G Brown?
Against.
Councillor P Brown?
Four.
Councillor Burrows?
Four.
Councillor Coleman?
Against.
Councillor Cross?
Four.
Councillor Dale?
Four.
Councillor Fox?
Against.
Councillor Harvey?
Against.
Councillor Hensley?
Against.
Councillor Jones?
Four.
Councillor Low?
Abstaining.
Councillor McCartney?
Four.
Councillor Oxley?
Four.
Councillor Payne?
Against.
Councillor Powell?
Four.
Councillor Resa?
Against.
Councillor Stevenson?
Abstaining.
Councillor Waller?
Four.
Councillor Walters?
Against.
Councillor Webb?
Four.
Councillor Willby?
Against.
So members. Members for fourteen, against ten, abstentions two. Three, sorry. So that motion stands.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, again, just for the benefit of the recording, the voting was, as the chairman just wrote out, and therefore the motion, as before council, is counted.
Thank you very much, thank you, officers, thank you, members. Because that was all the meeting closed at two minutes to ten.